Listen.
It's up, but you can't hear no sound though.
Anton, can you hear us?
I hear it.
He said, yes.
Yeah.
I can hear you now.
Everybody here, every-
Welcome to WebEx. Enter your access code or a meeting number followed by pound.
Hello. Hello, don't mute me because I'm trying to figure out- I'm trying to- Because it's asked of me to put my access code in-
And been used to that type of interaction and that type of dialogue. And he is was very complimentary of that meeting that he went that he was a part of as a landlord.
It's good to know.
I think, you know, there's plenty to, you know, not know, know, to know we've got a long way to go. But when, when we have good things like that, we ought to lift those up as well. They had they all of them enjoyed that meeting.
It will continue as well, you know, we need to keep that dialogue going moving forward, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Outside of that, I don't think I have anything else, Mr. Chairman. Anyone have any questions?
So, so what, what kind of feedback are you getting from the landlords on the affordablehousing.com?
So far, nobody really complained about it.
Really?
Yeah. I mean, their biggest issue, their biggest issue right now is people in their units that they can't get out. That's their biggest issue, right?
So we aren't actually at this point reducing rents?
Well, I don't know if we reduce anything. I don't think, have we, I don't know that.
I think-
We have a chart.
Chart says, I think.
Yeah, the chart shows that.
We, I know we have an approved rent increase.
That's right.
But I don't, I don't know whether it's reducing any.
I thought there was a small number that, um, here. Reduced was one, one last month.
Okay.
But, but actually, a related question, because I think sometimes I get confused about this. I think the numbers that we're seeing are only the people, I think it's only the data from the people that are coming, the landlords that are asking for renting places. And so there's two categories that we don't have any, as a board, have any visibility into, which is new applicants and then the checks that you're running for HUD compliance on everybody. So how is that going? I mean-
Well, almost complete.
Okay.
So hopefully by the next board meeting, we should have some, something to share with the guys.
Okay.
To what, what it tells us, the story that it tells us. And with the new ones, we haven't really had any complaints about the new ones, so I'm assuming things are going well. Normally you hear, when I first got here, there were several new landlords that were complaining, but once we started doing the landlord sessions and, and talking to them about how the process works, number one, and explaining the program to them, those have stopped so far, so let me knock on wood, I mean.
Again, I want to apologize, I know we've been having some technical difficulties and you may not have heard all of the executive directors report. And so one other question, can you give us, one other question, can you give us an update on the recent fire in one of our buildings?
Oh, which one, Clarice House?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, so Reese, you want to give that update for Clarice House fire?
I could, yeah, so.
Well, Nona, Nona has it, Nona, do you have the, can you give us a little background on the Clarice House fire?
So, yes, the incident happened a couple of weeks ago. The property we're going through now with risk management. The insurance company was out last Thursday to do an assessment. We'll be moving forward with remediation. There are some families that will actually be transferring from the, from their current units to other units that were part of that section of the property. It impacted roughly six to seven families that we have to transfer to other units at Clarice. The investigation is still ongoing, though.
Preliminary was what, that they thought she was smoking in bed, that's what I heard?
Yes. That's what the preliminary results were.
I think it might have been electrical too. Trying to hitting back towards that.
Hey, any other questions for the executive director?
Your orientation to community and how you are planning the, the different events. I find that that orientation to community is missing from the principles that we are starting to develop and talk about around redevelopment of our portfolio. So, you know, the way in which you're thinking about, like, how do we integrate with the surrounding communities? How do we help build community? How do we help build a bridge? I, I feel like the design of and the redevelopment of public housing has a significant impact on its neighbor, on its neighbors, right? Its immediate neighbors. And in the past, like, the redevelopment of public housing has been done in ways that cut off public housing residents from their neighbors, right? Like, in, in options that are like not walkable or, or friendly in terms of like the integration into the grid, the city grid. So I, I would love to see that work start to reflect this, the same concept that you are taking in planning these events and in thinking about the integration of community to also be reflected in how we're thinking about redeveloping our properties as well. So that was just something that struck me when you-
That's why we have the principles. So the principles allow me to go out and talk to the residents about how we're going to integrate them. Remember now, since New Orleans as well as Alexandria, I have residents involved from, from A to Z from the selection of the developer through the complete process, so the negotiation process. So they've always been involved and I always want to include them. So I'm that guy.
Okay.
So, so.
And, and so I'm talking about more than just our residents?
Right.
What about the neighbors and how the property fits into the neighborhood?
Right.
Let's, yeah.
And I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I'm, I'm open to any kind of dialogue. What I will say is this, I want my residents to drive the rebuilding of their community because it is their community now. Because it's around the community, I get it, because most residents are going to tell you, it's like in Alexandria, we were doing the negotiations for Sandy Madden and they said, come to the bar view meeting and I want you guys to speak up. And I said, one of the residents, she said, listen, we told her, we look to our left, they got brand new buildings. Look to our right, they got brand new buildings. We want buildings like those.
As well, yeah.
So, so while we can have the dialogue with the surrounding community, I want to make sure that the residents live in that property because that's their neighborhood and they, they get the, the lion's share to say so and all, but I'm open to talk to anyone.
And I a hundred percent am on board, like, our residents should be centered, yeah.
Okay. If there are no further questions, we'll move to our next agenda item, which is resident testimony. So just for clarification, we only have a few non-residents signed up to testify today. So I'm going to go right from the resident testimony and, and then do the non-resident, general public testimony, all, all at once. Okay, so the first resident is-
Is Betty Queen. Ms. Queen, are you online? Star six to unmute. Okay, I'll move on. Next, we have Charlize Walker. I'll move forward. Kenneth Council.
Good afternoon, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Good afternoon. I, I'm concerned about the cameras. It seems like that the cameras are not working. I don't know if you all are working on them, but the cameras that are on those 10 sites that should be up and running, they're not working. I would like to know, have you all addressed? Because since I've left, I haven't heard you all mention the Marigo. I haven't heard y'all say anything about the three vacant lots at the Arthur Kappa. I've driven through and passed the, there are a lot of land at West Virginia and Mont Olive Road. I haven't heard anything about that. And the last, I believe, is either 12 or 16 scattered sites that were supposed to be sold. I haven't heard of anything that in the past two years. Factual, there are two residents. There's a, a young lady, I won't give her name over the public view, but there's a young lady that has handicap and she said that she's been asking and she's being ignored. She has handicap over at Woodland. Nonie Eve knows who, who she is and they haven't done anything about her yet. Yes, I have someone on my property that's being forced to take a voucher. She has not found anywhere to live yet and she's in dire need of help and she doesn't want the voucher, but she was made to accept it and sign off on it. The summer's coming and you all know public safety needs to kind of get in where our hotspots are because the stolen cars are being placed there. That's the end of my testimony, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Council. We'll follow up on those issues, but I do would like the executive duress, executive director to address one issue and that is the cameras.
So as I mentioned earlier, when they couldn't hear me, that, that we are rolling out cameras to repair the ones that are down and also to increase the number of cameras on various properties. We have walked all the properties except for any tariffs. Some of them we haven't got to yet. So we've walked through the properties with Chief Reese, we've identified areas and other areas where we need cameras as well as the ones that are down. In my staff meeting yesterday, Mike Buck, the IT director, talked about the fact that the cameras are now have been ordered and they're coming in, so you should start see the camera, the repairs being made as well as the new cameras being installed.
So we're talking a matter of weeks, months?
Yeah, so he said, touch all the properties probably through August, but starting now, so, August.
Okay, great. Okay, next.
Next, we have Paulette Matthews. Ms. Matthews, star six to unmute.
Man, hello, every- Can you hear me?
Can you hear you? Yes.
Okay, fine, excellent. Actually, I want to piggyback off of Kenneth Council, far worse as security. I addressed it, it's true, but once the cameras are up and running, my question is, because this has been my concern as well, far worse as when y'all do your monthly meeting, that y'all incorporate that into your monthly meeting, whether it be by the director or whether it be by the chief, that it should be something that's always a given. Um, I really don't have too much to say in reference to the property. Y'all caught me coming up the steps, okay? So, I'm trying to catch my breath too. Um, that I live on right now, because we're working through it. But if it ain't no changes within next month, you'll hear about it. I would like to talk about where I once lived, Berry Farms, and all the questions that we- and all the questions that we, we didn't ask, or the concerns that we should have had, but we didn't. We were so busy fighting for different things. Um, yes, we talked of the senior building, and we felt that those seniors get first priority, but never in our whole life did we think that it would just be one building that would be put up. We didn't ask how the procedures go when it comes to permits and how long does it take for things to be built? And to have that one building and say hip, hip, hooray, I don't feel that type of way. I don't know how many other people feel that type of way. Because, um, we were expecting to come back, and they say we're going to come back, but many have died before coming back, and plenty of more going to die as well before they get back. And some of us might get there through the process and die a week or so after we arrive. And a lot of people don't want to talk about death, but that's the reality. So, we have to incorporate that as well. So, in that process, we always kept asking, was there any money available? Can, will the money be there? And it was always, yes, yes, yes. And maybe the question should have been, the questions I just asked, about how long does it take to get a permit? How come all seven in a row on that side with that, that building is now getting ready to open, the senior building? Why haven't they started or had at the same time been doing that? And what does that look like? How do they plan to do this? How long is it going to take for them to do seven in a row? How long Eaton Stevens first Sterling? When will it be complete? How many units come up at each time? Because the more you hear it, oh, we're trying to get them back. But when you look at the real picture, that doesn't look like that. So, those are really my concerns right now. The fact that we fought to have Berry Farms be historical, slapping the face in a sense, far worse as having those houses, it was about the history and all of that that came along with it, that they bought their land and all of that. But we want to, they want to say, oh, well, we'll give you the buildings. So, with all of that being said, how long would that take to work out? How, the, the permit thing is the issue, and no one ever talks about it, but we should talk about it, I think, at every board meeting if necessary, so that we can get a clear understanding through DCHA and also through POA. And when will there be a meeting where DCHA and POA will be together, and we can ask these questions or find out what's going on? Because I know the process will take a while.
Thank you, Matthews. Um, I know there have been meetings with the, the, since Berry Farm and our deputy executive directors, and just bring us up the data. One building's under construction, and we just approved the financing for the second building.
That's correct. I was trying to say if Sheila was on. Okay, Sheila, do you want to take that, want to give, when the last meeting happened?
Yes, I just, uh, update with regard to the development. Um, as Ms. Matthew mentioned, uh, the Asbury is, during construction completion, we are, uh, in about a month or two, we will be closing on the financing for the second building, uh, the Edmondson, which will contain 138 units. Um, so, and that will take roughly, um, 18 to 24 months to complete. Um, as, as the chair mentioned, uh, about a month or so ago, we, uh, approved, um, funding for the infrastructure for the second phase of Berry Farm site.
Okay.
Thank, thank you.
Sure. Next one, um, Yvette Redrick. Ms. Redrick, are you online? Okay, I'll move forward. Patricia Bishop. Ms. Bishop, are you with us today?
Yes, I am. Good evening, everyone. Hi. I would like to thank each and every one of y'all for the job that you continue to make go well with tenants of DC Public Housing. Keep up the good work as we move along. There will be better things for each and every one of us in public housing. Now, to bring the subject to green leaf. Green leaf is very important as we move forward with anything of a development. No rad. Make sure our tenants are healthy. That's my goal, to make sure of that. I appreciate the, um, outstanding work that everyone has done to work with me with providing the correct things for green leaf. As far as the paintings, the pictures, the ground cover, the cameras, and anything else that, um, I've asked for, that I might not have been granted it yet, but I will be granted it, especially, um, the purifiers, the portable AC units for the people in the, in our apartments before it get too hot. And I would like to know a date of when this heat will be cut off. Uh, sometimes it's been like April the 15th, sometime it's been May or when they get around to us. I would like a, a date to when that would be cut off and, uh, around about date of when we will receive these portable ACs for the unit that does not have it. Anything else as we move forward? I do appreciate the help that I get from the outstanding employees of DC Housing to continue to work with me to make sure that I do what's best, not just for myself, but everyone in this building of 203 that I have the president to represent. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, Ms., uh, Bishop. I'm sure the staff appreciates your compliment, and they can follow up with you on when the heat will be cut off and, and the portable air conditioners brought in. Thank you. So, so we're going to move right into the non-residents', uh, testimony. Again, you have three minutes to provide testimony.
Okay, the first, we have April Davis.
I apologize for cutting my mic on this, this is Ms. Bishop again. Y'all having a little bit of technical difficulties, so the whole room is disappearing. So, please look into that.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm going to move forward. Daniel Del Pe- Peleigo.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I have several questions that I'll try to get in here, um, and several just observations that I wanted to, to make to the board and to leadership. One is, I've been getting a lot of calls about inaccurate ledgers. Many people, uh, are being told that they are behind when they really feel they are not behind. This is affecting people's ability to be in good standing, to avail themselves of the voucher when their name has come up on the list. So, I just wanted to flag that and to see if there are any plans on doing any sort of ledger review or cleanup to ensure that they are up to date. That's one issue. I've also received a call now from several Berry Farm residents who have been told, who are being offered units at the new senior building, but for one reason or another, they do not want to take a unit there. My question is, what does that mean for their ability to return if they say, you know, we don't want to come to the Asbury? We'd rather wait till other units open up that are more like the housing we used to have. Uh, does it preclude them from returning if they decline this offer? Um, I'm also, uh, became aware that the mayor is cutting a funding stream that was supposed to begin for, in 2028, that would, uh, assist the housing authority in rehab and modernization. Uh, right now, that funding stream is being cut. I don't know if, how that impacts the ability to deliver on anything you all may have had plans for in, in the future. So, just wanted to flag that. And then lastly, I, we didn't hear the director's report, but I wonder if we can get an update on vacant units and how many units are available? I am hearing that a significant amount of people in the rapid rehousing program are going to lose their housing in just a couple of months, and potentially, there's, I think, some thought to put them in public housing units. I don't know if you, you know, it, it's several thousand people, and I don't know if the capacity is there. So, I wanted to see if there's, uh, any discussion. I realize these are a lot of questions, and if anybody's taking notes, I'd love to have a written response. But if there's any responses now, I, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll follow up with, with, uh, responses to, to all of your questions.
And last, we have Caprice Vega. Ms. Vega, are you with us? Chairman, that concludes our public testimony.
Did any of the people who missed, did they come on, see any of the names?
I did not see.
Okay, thank, thank you, uh, all for your testimonies this evening, this afternoon. Uh, next, we're going to move into committee reports, and I'm going to start with the budget audit committee. Commissioner Reese.
Thank you. Uh, so, the committee met earlier this week, um, for our regular monthly meeting. Really, what, uh, we were focused on and have been focused on for the last several meetings is our annual audits. Um, so, we did receive a briefing from our independent auditors about the status of the FY22 audit. Looks like things are moving in the right direction, and it should be finalized, um, very, very soon. So, we hope to be able to recommend the board adopt, uh, the audit for FY22 at our next meeting, uh, in May. We also discussed the FY23 audit that's currently underway. The auditors reported that they had almost everything they needed from DCHA and expected that they were going to be able to move very, very quickly. Uh, I think, as you know, uh, chairman and others, we are trying to make sure we get this audit to HUD by the end of June. So, we'll be working closely with the team, uh, making sure we, the committee avails themselves when needed to be able to approve that audit, and we'll let you know if, for some reason, we have to have a special session, but our goal is to try to bring it to the June audit. Um, we, uh, also were able to review the income and expenses report at a high level, which I know is included in our book, um, and, uh, looks like things are, are on track. Um, so, it was a, a good discussion, and we're pleased with the progress the team is making.
Great, so I would make one note that, um, in the, the published, uh, agenda, there was a resolution 24-10 to accept the audit of, this would be your 2022. That is going to be, uh, deferred, uh, until our next meeting. Uh, it's not quite ready yet for the board to take action.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we'll move to the Capitol Projects Committee, uh, Commissioner Murphy.
Sure. Um, we met late, last month and covered a couple of topics. I think we spent the bulk of our conversation going over the new proposed, uh, principles, uh, for development, uh, that I think the board was share, uh, shared a copy of those, were shared with the board in our, uh, at our last education meeting. So, we had some, some exposure to those. Um, I believe the plan at some point is to bring those to the board for formal adoption, and we'll, we'll keep books updated on that. Uh, and in the meantime, if anyone had any questions or concerns about them, we'd be happy to discuss them. Um, we also talked a little bit about the obsolescence report, uh, that's, uh, going on. I think we've got an outside party, um, viewing our entire portfolio of properties, uh, for obsolescence, and they'll be coming forth with the results of that this year. Uh, and so, as we think about how to manage the overall portfolio, that report's going to be very helpful and, and inform a lot of the decisions going forward. Um, I should probably mention Melvo. Um, you, we all may remember that, I think, one of the first projects that we approved as a new board last year was, um, combining several of our properties into, Melvo, remember, Melvo is an acronym. Um, that, that project ran up into some challenges around financing. I think specifically it was a, a bond cap issue that prevented the, the various projects to go, go, to go forward. So, what the, the team, which I appreciate is they're not resting on their laurels. They've gone back and said, look, we, we tried this way, it didn't work. We now need to sort of think about another way. So, they've disaggregated it now and are looking at sort of a piece-by-piece approach and, um, are, are trying to move forward on those various pieces. So, I think we wanted to just update you all, knowing that we, that's something we had approved last year. Um, and then we closed by, um, spending a little bit of time talking about the urgent needs campaign and reviewing, uh, or I guess what we're now calling the vacant unit turn, uh, project. And so, it's good to see we're making some progress there, and we're, we're keeping our eye on the contracting and appreciate the staff sharing the latest information on that with us. You got that later today, or earlier today. Um, and then lastly, just some, you know, in terms of celebration, I think we've alluded to the, the Asbury and, and Berry Farm, the, and, and Kennelworth. Um, I think we've got two, two developments this year that are going to be reopening, and so, pretty soon, we're starting to gear up for leasing and, or not leasing, I shouldn't say, or in some of them cases, leasing. Um, so, we're, we're very excited to get those, those properties online and, and get residents in brand-new buildings. So, exciting stuff.
Okay, any questions for Commissioner Murphy? Uh, hearing none, we'll move on to the Operation and Administrative Services Committee. Commissioner Jones, the chair of that committee, is not able to be with us today. So, I'm going to ask Commissioner Silla to give that report.
Thank you. Right as soon as my computer kicked me out of our, our committee, uh, books and, um, uh, preparing for, um, this report out. So, we, we talked about two particular, two resolutions, both of which are in front of the board, um, today, um, related to, um, contracts for pest control services and contract for the motor pool replacement, uh, trailer. Um, we, um, very much appreciate, um, the need for pest control. Um, and, uh, we recognize all of the efforts that, um, the DC Housing Authority has gone through in the procurement process. Um, but we are concerned, this is the second or third month where we are, um, uh, increasing contracts and, and procuring additional services. So, we wanted to make sure that we had a solid understanding about the budget, and we've requested for, um, in future, uh, board education symposiums that we touch base on the budget and really understand, um, uh, where the funding for these additional contracts is coming for. Um, especially because, um, you know, we're looking at, um, contracts related to pest control services now. We're hoping and maybe even anticipating, um, expansion of inspection services to be a part of the recovery planning and a part of the set of really important infrastructure-related investments that need to be, that need to happen. So, just in terms of forecasting and understanding the kinds of investments that need to be made to speed up lease-up, um, we know that that's going to be coming down. And so, we've requested, um, you know, a better understanding about where the funding for these contract increases are coming for, from. And, um, we understand that, uh, housing authority is moving towards budgets, operating budgets by, uh, property. And so, we're really looking forward to, um, uh, robust explanation about like how that, how that's working and how these, um, uh, additional expenditures will be covered. But we recognize the importance of them, and we definitely were in concurrence. Um, we also, I just wanted to speak to, it came up as part of, um, the, um, testimony. Um, we did, uh, and I've been flagging for several months, I think, we all know on the board, I've been talking about the homeless preference, how that's not necessarily, uh, working for us now that it's been removed, thinking about how do we pull that back in, um, and make sure that we're including at-risk homeless. Um, there, and there's also been, uh, requests from the deputy mayor for Health and Human Services and, uh, you know, DHS via the deputy mayor for Health and Human Services. So, we touched base on the areas that we need to be carefully considering and evaluating. Um, uh, the, the director is always, is very creative, um, is a problem solver and has, um, proposed, um, a certain, uh, has proposed, uh, programming that's, that might be specific and to attend to that. Uh, but we noted that we need to talk about the waitlist and really understanding what's the overlap between homeless services and that waitlist. Um, also making sure that we, you know, speed up on lease-up for everybody that's waiting on a voucher and that has been matched. Um, that's especially those that are experiencing homelessness and making sure we're expediting those. Um, and that, you know, we're evaluating all of these considerations. So, we expect that that's going to be something that's, um, further discussed at the next committee meeting and then coming back to the board.
Okay. Are you, are you, are you done?
Yes. So, sorry. So, with those three big discussion items, um.
Any, any questions?
I had a, a question, Chair, and, and you can come up now or it can come up when we get to the resolutions. But in answer to the, the, or, did you get answers to the questions about the budget or around the pest control? And then the, I know we, we're at this motor pool trailer, there is on the resolutions list as well.
So, we, we were reassured by the answers that we got, but we wanted to dive deeper.
Oh, I see.
Through the budgets for the.
So, maybe, maybe when we get to the resolutions, staff can cover that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But we flag, like, the importance of understanding as we're doing these additional procurements. We need to understand where the funding is.
So, uh, having said that, we, we do have two resolutions, uh, and the, the, the board received, uh, background information on each of the resolutions in the board package. So, I'm just going to ask, uh, that we start with Resolution 24-08 and get a motion to approve that, and then we'll have any discussion around that. So, at this time, I'd ask for a motion to approve Resolution 24-08.
I didn't hear from our committee.
We didn't cover all.
No, we're going to.
Oh, we're going to.
To resolution. I have forgotten about. So, motion, motion for Resolution 24-08.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion questions? This is the pest control services.
So, could we just ask staff to just detail for us where the funding is?
Sure, so, I, I can jump in really quickly. So, pest services is an operating expense through the property, so it'll come out of the operating. Sure. So I can jump in really quickly. So pest services is an operating expense through the property. So it'll come out of the operating of budgets. Right now it's centralized. We're going to a more property specific. So when we go to property budgets, we'll break it down by that. But it'll be a regular operational cost and coming out of the operational dollars.
But right now it's coming from the centralized dollars.
Right, because it's one budget.
Okay. Okay. And in the future it'll get a portion by property.
Yes.
Now, was that included as the initial package when we presented all the new vendors and everything? Was that part of the line items?
I can't recall, sorry.
Certainly I thought it was, but anyway.
I believe it is.
The money is there. That's all that I
We flagged it before because we've been talking about inspections and pest services being included as part of that, that, that new procurement that we did after the emergency. So I'm most, I'm most certain it was a line item in there already.
Oh, oh, and maybe.
The environmental work, like I remember environmental work, but I'm not sure that I remember pest control as a part of that.
They didn't, they didn't, but I know I've been screaming for pest services since I hit the door because when I walk these properties, everybody's been hitting me up about this.
Yes.
So
And so I'll just add, I mean, pest service is really not an emergency. That's a part of keeping your assets up. So it's definitely a part of the operating.
Let's see if I hear it's emergency because
No, I mean, I'm saying like emergency, like we shouldn't have to allocate emergency dollars. It's a part of your assets every day. Yes, yes.
And does this represent an increase in overall pest management services compared to last year?
Yes.
That's great.
Yes. Yes, I'm declaring a warm release.
It's, it's been moved and seconded to the school resolution twenty four dash oh eight. Can we have a roll call, roll call?
Sure. Commissioner Blackson? Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Silla?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
And Chairman Ringstrom?
Yes.
Thank you. Then the second resolution is twenty four dash oh nine. And this is to authorize a contract for motor replacement trailer. And again, there was some information presented to the board in our package. So I'm going to ask for a motion to approve this resolution and then we can have discussion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion of questions? I guess I would like the director or whoever is about, just to, to give a, a quick overview of what this is. Why this needs to be replaced. I guess it's, it's
We're in terror. Listen, when I ran the school bus system, we use trailers for the officers and they get worn out ultimately quickly. It's my understanding, this trailer is fourteen years old and just the wear and tear of it. You start, the floor starts to get spongy and that kind of stuff. So it needed to be replaced. We decided to replace it.
Then again, this is assumed an operational issue that'll come out of the operating budget.
This was a capital expense. I believe you're on there. I believe this was already budgeted.
This one actually was budgeted to come out of reserves.
Any other questions? If there are none, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution twenty nine. And we have a roll call.
Sure. Commissioner Silla?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackson?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you, Commissioner. And Chairman Ringstrom?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. And last and certainly not least, we'll have the report of the resident Commissioner Blackson?
Good afternoon. Can you hear me? Apologize. I'm the chair of the Resident Service Committee. The, the Resident Service Committee is focused on residents, just as the title says. We are currently just working on trainings and different education for the residents. Closely working with the Office of Resident Service and client relations and customer service manager. Also with the Citywide Advisory Board that come up with some resolutions and different trainings for the resident leaders. And we just went on an educational retreat with Commissioner Burbidge and the Citywide Advisory Board. And I'll let her share a little details about that.
Well, Commissioner Lee can tell you all, she was there. We had a wonderful time. We did on the schedule was Philadelphia, Annapolis and Baltimore. We got, and I did give your hellos and your hellos and Yes, yes. And everyone was happy to see us there. So we're going to do more of those type of trips. Apparently, I'm, we have partnered with Howard University School of Social Work. Because residence is about residence. We're currently looking for eighty participants in D C Housing, you know, the residence and subsidies that have children with, has mother, caregiver will give a fifteen to twenty minute survey. And they will be, as an incentive, each caregiver will get a fifty dollar gift certificate. So if you know of any family members, you know, anyone out there can hear us, you can contact myself, you can contact Commissioner Blackson. We also, since we have had the privilege of attending so many conferences, we're working on D C H A hosting a conference and asking other R A B S, Residential Advisory Board, I'm so used to saying Citywide, to come to share with us, to let us know what things are going right. In the meeting yesterday, as we told you, Ms. Abrams, or she, Dr. Abrams, okay, she told us how to take the resident participation fund and increase it legally. So I'll share.
I'll call Janet. We need to have a conversation. I got you.
Very excited about that. We're going to do engagements, you know, going out to the community and to answer your questions. As a resident, yes, we do participate with the A N C board. When they have an outing, which they always have, they invite us, they don't see us as D C H A property. They see us as their neighbor. So we want to make sure that we keep that curb appeal that is not like, oh, housing outside looks so bad. And so far I must admit with my property and some of the properties I have viewed, that has been happening. They're planting flowers, they're getting the trash out, you know, curb, it's just making us, we're dispersing that myth that they have about public housing because you've got good, smart, intelligent people in public housing. And thus I'll turn it back over to Commissioner Blackson unless Commissioner Lee would like to tell you how she enjoyed the, you know, the
I echo what you said. It was a very, it was a very
So much, Commissioner Burbidge and also Commissioner Lee, we did have a good time in Baltimore at the retreat. I just wanted to share also that we do work closely with the A N C commissioner in my community as well as across different public housing boards, a lot of the leaders, some are actually A N C commissioners as myself and a few of the other resident leaders. And we work closely with our community partners to make sure that D C H A is included. We're, we're good neighbors as we try to be and Office of Resident Services is definitely a great partner to have with the Resident Service Committee because it's exactly as the name states. It's all about the residents. And I have a, a letter from a resident that she would like for me to read right now. And I'm going to share this with you. Give me one second. An email, actually she wants me to read. She sent me a message. And it reads, "Good morning. After our meeting yesterday, I looked at the market rent for nine hundred and forty-two before the increase for rent was nineteen nineteen for my apartment. Now my calculations show that there has been a hundred and three point seventy-five percent increase, which my belief is entirely too much for subsidized community. I am aware that during COVID there were no increases. However, if this amount of increases across the D C H A portfolio, this increase is not designed to ensure their rent remains reasonable and affordable for any resident living within D C H A communities. I'd ask that you take a good look at this and make some changes more sooner than later." So I just wanted to share that because that's, that's the type of things that happen with the, of resident, the Committee on Resident Services, I'm sorry. That's the type of feedback we get from residents and resident leaders and we want to share with their state, exactly as they state it. And hopefully someone can answer that or get back to me with the answer for this concern.
So, so while, while you were in Baltimore, did you get a chance to tour any of their projects? I know there's a huge repositioning slash redevelopment project going on in Baltimore.
We did not get, we, we got to see a PowerPoint presentation on some of their
Okay.
He said the work that they're doing there.
Okay. So what, what did you learn in terms of how Baltimore is approaching the, the redevelopment and particularly the issues of, of working with residents and the right to return and so forth?
We, we learned a lot there. I believe their executive director, she's a great director and it seems to all the different resident service committees that was there, as far as their citywide advisory board and resident leaders, they seem to have a good rapport with her. And it looks like she's working on a lot of great projects there.
Other questions for the Service Committee of the Board? If none? Thank you, Commissioner Blackson.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on. We have two resolutions, one regarding our A C O P, Michigan Continued Occupancy Policy and one regarding the administrative plan. So I'm going to ask our, our general counsel to explain these resolutions and why we need to take this action today.
Sure. If it's, if it's okay with you, the, the reason's the same for both. So I'm going to give, I'll give the, the explanation sort of in conjunction for both of them, even though we usually consider one at a time. But last year, the, the agency engaged in a, a big, big task to revise its administrative plan governing its operations of the H C V P program. And then also the admissions and continued occupancy policy or the A C O P for our public housing program. We, the board approved them and they were published as emergency regulations. These policies have been out for public comment. They were also submitted to HUD for, for review and comment. We, we have, we have hoped to, to be able to sort of finalize these as, as revised and, and not emergency policies, but unfortunately we're still waiting for some comments from HUD that precludes us from finalizing right now. So because our emergency regulations only are in effect for a hundred and twenty days, we're asking the board to approve. Should I say for the, hopefully for the final time, the, you know, another emergency extension of both the administrative, the administrative plan as well as the admissions and continued occupancy policy. You know, obviously I think it's, you know, it's our hope that we'll have, you know, an updated one. You know, as soon as we have, you know, HUD comments and, and are able to sort of, that, that reflects, you know, those, those comments as well as, you know, some of our conversations with our stakeholders.
So, so can you or, or maybe the director can talk about the process and timing for getting this final, final
So not emergency, you mean?
Yeah, the non-emergency, right.
Well, so, you know, the, the version I believe that has been published, and I know this preceded all of our, our time here. But the version that's been published was, you know, consistent, was the version that was, I think, put out for public comment initially. We have not been able to sort of, you know, provide an updated version that incorporates the public comments, the HUD comments, all those sort of things. Yeah, because we're waiting for the public, you know, for the HUD comments. Once we have those, we should be able to issue and update it and, and revise A C O P now and add to the plan, if that's what you're, right, so
Final.
A final, a final, but, but it's, well, go ahead. I mean, I
Well, I think what he's asking is how would one move this thing along with HUD to get, to get them to get off that, right?
Plus whatever we need to do. I mean, there's some processes that we need to undertake.
Oh, yeah, I know. And so we, we, we expressed our concerns about closing this out once and for all with Laura. She's been apologetic. She's the head of the HUD billboards for D C E M B reach. And so she, she, she was apologetic about the fact that they haven't gotten around to move it as fast as they'd like to, but she pretty much assured us that they would take care of it at the time of the matter. Now, what that mean, I know that they do a lot of reviews of agencies because you hear a lot. So there's a lot going on, but that's sort of where we are. We're sort of reversing them in a way, but we've been nudging her in a way, but not, not, not too aggressively that, you know, they, they feel.
So HUD notwithstanding, we also got a number of public comments pages. How are we addressing those comments?
We reviewed them, but it really can't do much with it until we see what the version comes back from HUD, right? Because you're going to have to now cross reference some of that stuff too. It's one thing to look at and say, okay, we see it, but till we see what HUD comes back with in terms of changes that may conflict, you know, or what have you. It's going to be hard to really act on any of that stuff. I mean, we have them.
But, so what is your sense of of how these comments comport with what you think ought to be done? The conflicts between what you see the agency wanting to do versus some of these public comments or, you know, how you
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it, look, we have over a hundred pages of public comments. We, we, we don't agree with all of them, right? I mean, I, I'll be honest, right? We agree with some, we, you know, others we don't. So it's, it's, you know, we are obviously we want to accommodate what we, what we can, right? I mean, so, so, but, but, you know, the, the general, you know, it, it's, it's, it's not all a hundred pages, right? So, so, I mean, that, that, I, I know that's a bit of a wishy washy, you know, response, but, but I mean, that, that's, that's the truth. It's, you know, it's, it's, some of them, some of them are going to be incorporated and others, you know, we don't feel like we can do.
So what is a timeframe that you're trying to get them to get over? I mean, you know, have to negotiate all these issues, but what is there a timeframe that you're trying to meet?
I mean, it's as soon as possi, I mean, we, we want to get this done, right? I mean, everyone, I think, you know, it's as soon as possible. So it's, you know, unfortunately, I think, you know, as Keith said, I mean, HUD is, HUD is trying, but they're busy and we don't really know what's coming back. They haven't really previewed for us. So I don't know. I don't know if it's a hundred pages of HUD comments or three pages of N I Ts. And, and that's why
It's a problem on the P R side.
Yeah.
We get blamed.
Yeah.
Because they aren't responding timely and trying to facilitate to help us do this. And this is an outstanding, you know, this is a historical thing about our agency. So I don't know how we would approach to say, try to shift the, you know, shift it over to them saying it's in their court. We're ready to go, but, you know, they're not ready.
Yeah, there, there is sort of another that I'm exploring with other folks. I'd say, listen, we get it. Because there's probably issues too. Only HUD doesn't pay cops and that.
Yeah.
Actually, which is the really strange part of this, where you got to have those conversations. So the delicacy because of the position that the agency was in, right? I don't want to, I don't want to annoy people and then all of a sudden here we are in a storm because they want to, they really want to make, make
So, so I guess they're reviewing, reviewing it because this is one of the findings and
Exactly.
But, but still, but again
So, so just so we're clear, so ultimately does HUD have to approve the A C O P?
They, they don't. They don't typically approve the policy as a whole, but because it's one of our findings, we need them to sign off to clear it. So whether that constitutes approval with a capital A, I don't know, effectively.
Can we try like understanding that they have to still do their review? I think it would be really good for us and maybe we could do this at the committee level where you could, at least we could, between your team and our team, start to talk about what, what of the public comments do you agree with and do you not agree with? So that we can at least familiarize ourselves with the pros and cons of the different options and start to narrow down, like make sure we're on the same page about some of those things. So that when HUD does turn around, we're in a position where we're ready to move. And at least we're on the same page about the public comments that we've received, what works, what doesn't work. And maybe even we can start to be transparent with the folks And maybe even we can start to be transparent with the folks that have been responding about which sorts of comments we are likely not going to be able to accommodate. Because I think people appreciate also that level of transparency and honesty. So
And I do think there's been, you know, a separate request from some of the advocate groups to do exactly, you know, to do exactly that. And we, you know, we do, I mean, that is something that I think we're intending to do. It's just, it's hard to, it's hard to meet with them when I don't know if HUD's going to come back and say, you can't do this, and we, and you know what I mean? That's why I've been a little hesitant to start going through this, but maybe that we can try to figure something out. But maybe internally, yeah.
Internally, at least be ready.
Yeah, and I can give you three topics. I'm just going to help you, help you. You know, three topics that the residents made it very clear, it's non-negotiable. The one in there is the pet, the no pet, because you can grandfather pets in or whatever the case may be. So we're not going to move on that one, just to let you know, there'll be a fight down the road.
You want pets, you want pets or you don't want that?
No, we do. People who have pets, there's a difference between a pet and an emotional support animal. All right, so they want to keep it, you know, they talk about taking people fish tanks. This was a, pets were supposed
No, fish tanks, just listen.
Keep going in.
In 2015, in 2015, the agency, the authority failed because that's when it was enacted. So you can't make mistakes and then blame us. You know, it's not laughable, but it's laughable. So we're talking facts. You knew this in 2015 as an authority, not you guys, but DCHA did. You did absolutely nothing. Then you come back and tell us what HUD said. Well, HUD told you before you told us and you did not act on it. The other thing that was a problem was the visitations, telling people when someone can come to their house, who can spend the night, how many times they can visit. It's not prison, it's public housing. And that is degrading and it takes away, just, I can't even see how someone could bring something to the table to tell me that I can't have a visit. Or if I'm a non-custodial parent, then if my child comes, you know, me and the other parent worked it out, then they can't come because they visit more than twelve times in one year. Let's be realistic and see how this is affecting people's lives. And the third thing that kept going back was the zero rent. Because while it's zero rent, if a person is re-entering or coming back or lost their job, are you telling them, wow, from what I heard a comment, and I won't say from who, but kind of set field with me, is that, well, you must at least get this. Don't tell me to go borrow no money from somebody when you're being subsidized for their complete pay. That's taking away people's dignity. So we need to think that. And if that helps you, those are the three things that we kept going back across the
I just asked for You don't want the minimum rent of, are you saying the zero rent?
They say It's zero rent. If a person has zero, they have zero.
Okay.
You cannot force a person who has, how are you going to get it? If they have nothing, how can you tell them, well, you have nothing, big bar? That's not how it works. No, that messes up the whole system. All right, thank you.
Just a question about HUD. Would it be helpful or probably counterproductive for the board to sort of write HUD and say, we appreciate your partnership, but could you please respond to the comments? Or does that just help? Does that help the board?
That's it. I got another plan that I think will probably work. Give me what's we need to
You could also tell HUD that your board is getting impatient and they got to hook you up.
That will be part of the conversation. So have a call Friday with someone that I'm hoping that will allow us to be able to push this on.
Nobody wants to send a letter to Acting Secretary Hodges.
Hotfield Office attends all of my ICH committee and poll council meetings. Do they not listen into your board meetings?
I do.
There's a very different division.
So Amy, so this is what the fourth emergency. So in terms of timeframe, where does this take us through? What does this take us?
This takes us through a hundred and twenty days from tomorrow.
Middle of August.
So, I mean, fingers crossed.
That's our timeframe that we're shooting for. Get all this wrapped up.
Yeah.
And in the meantime, it's okay to, like, actually add this to our agenda and to start talking about
Just for clarity, also, we did post something in the register related to this. Not that we're voting on that today, but am I right?
There was, there was a snafu.
Okay.
And it has not yet been posted, but
But it will be.
Yes.
So we're about to post something in the register, but it will come up again?
Yes, or, yes, yeah, right. So what we're, I mean, one of the challenges, I mean, what you're alluding to, and I mean, that can, you know, is that, you know, we have some things that can't necessarily wait for us to do a full, full finalization of this. And so, and so that's what, you know, we're trying to not make, you know, we're trying to make only minimal changes if we can, because we recognize that, you know, this has been a very long process. But yeah, there will be something coming out.
Still have to
That will be out for and there will be
Operational stuff has to continue.
Yes.
There may be some areas where we have to make some
We just do. Exactly. I mean, the residents can't wait, right? I mean, we just, we just want to, we don't want to, we want to be fair to our residents.
All right, okay. Having said that, then I would now like to move on to Resolution 24-11. So can we get a motion to approve that? That's the fourth emergency and proposed regulations for the ACOF.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
So we have a roll call vote, 24-11.
Sure. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Stella?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackson? Heard you, Commissioner Blackson, thank you. Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes.
And Chairman Raymond Skinner?
Yes.
All of your passes.
Okay, now I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution 24-12. And this is to publish fourth emergency and proposed regulations for the DCHA administrative plan. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Sure. Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Stella?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackson?
Yes.
Heard you. And Chairman Raymond Skinner?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
All right, then the final resolution is 24-13 to appoint Commissioner Melissa Lee to the DC Housing Enterprises Board of Directors. Ken, I'm going to ask again our general counsel just to very briefly explain what this is about.
Sure. So there, DCHA has a subsidiary to DC Housing Enterprises, engages in activities that support our mission. DCHA is the sole member of DCHE and is, has the pleasure of appointing one of the DCHE board members to, and from, from the DCHA Board of Commissioners, if that makes sense. So this resolution, we have a vacancy in our DCHA board member representation on the DCHE board. And so this would, Chair Skinner is also on the board by right as well. But we were hoping to fill that remaining position. So this resolution is to appoint Commissioner
Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve that we can take questions.
Can I just, and then I think, Commissioner Lee, I think is abstaining from this vote. Okay, so I was just going to, okay.
So move.
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Sure. Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackson? I heard you, Commissioner Blackson, thank you, thank you. Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Stella?
Yes.
And Chairman Raymond Skinner?
Yes.
Resolution passed.
We congratulate and thank Commissioner Lee for taking all this responsibility.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is what we call Commissioner's Time. And if you're going to score around, see if the commissioners have any issues that bring up any concerns, any, the good news that you want to bring to the board today.
I have one question. But this is so, the public can hear. My question is, now that Melvo is on hold, the, one of the problems that the Melvo group was having is the repairs, you know, inter-repairs. Does that mean that the repairs within their property will go on? Because I get a lot of complaints, I'm the LA Melvo, and you came out and you did. But just so they would know across the board, if they're like, the stairway or something is wrong, should they feel free in contacting the office or who should they go through? Since it may not be a, you know, like a 535 call? That's all I wanted to know.
Yeah, first of all, repairs will be made. I'll be doing other walkthroughs, she will take it.
Thank you.
I have a question. Once the Abbott and ACOF plans go through, once the findings are cleared, and then you move into your regular cycle, what does the annual process from a timing standpoint look like?
Well, normally it's an annual review, where you identify, you get comments from throughout the year. And then when you publish it, you meet and talk about something to change, you want to make, you publish changes, too, right? You have to notice.
Yes, substantive changes.
It'll be an annual review. And sometimes, it's funny, you have to sort of let folks know, hey, listen, we're not going to be able to solve all your problems in one set sitting, right? But as we move forward and go along, it's the evolving document, right? So, but we'll try to get as much as we can, but it'll be an annual review. And very open review, I mean, you know, I'm going to be, so what you're saying, I don't know what to talk about.
May I piggyback off of Commissioner Lee? When we talk about the ACOF, especially the portion that affects residents personally, are there any residents involved before we make those changes?
Should be involved.
I mean, because we only hear it afterwards. Like, prior to hearing this about the pets and all that, someone would have had residents that are just trying to do everything
The answer is yes. Think about a minute.
It never
Not that the residents involved in a development of ACOF and ACOF.
I think so, too, but it has never happened until afterwards. That's why I'm putting it on record.
You got to be in there.
Okay.
We'll have four.
Okay, I'd like to bring up an issue. I think I saw an article, maybe it was in the Washington Post, about, and it was referring back to, I think, the, one of the hearings on the mayor's budget. And one of the council members was talking about the redevelopment, all the new redevelopment that's going on around the Audi Field and that park. Point, and we have, we have two properties, I think three. I mean, they have Syfax, James Street, which is down by Audi Field, and then Greenleaf, which is kind of in the middle, close to both Buzzard Point and the Nats Park. How are you looking at repositioning, redeveloping those properties to take into account all the potential private sector, high-end kind of redevelopment that's potentially going on in that area?
Share that out.
Yes. Just briefly, generally.
Not specific, something that's already over is when it worked before I got here. So you still got to talk to folks before you sort of announce it.
Not specifically.
Ideally, for me
Your philosophy.
My philosophy is that that area is a connection between a redeveloped Navy Yard and a redeveloped waterfront. And as well as what's going on on the backside of Audi Field and Buzzard Point. So it's an ideal location for us to do some very creative and amazing things down there. And so, and I'm excited about having future discussions about what the possibilities are, what we actually get done. But I think that that area should be the bridge between those two areas, Navy Yard Buzzard Point and the waterfront. So I'm excited and
So I am, too. I can't speak for the rest of the board, but for me personally, I mean, I view that as a huge opportunity. It's a very valuable plan that we need to take advantage of.
It makes you, it makes income more for viewers, I mean, listen, the whole ball of wax.
Commissioner Murphy?
No, I just, that's terrific. While I do have the floor, I want to correct myself. I did mention the two projects that will be taken on tenants this week, but I forgot one. And thanks to our crack staff, I got a quick text saying, you forgot Park Morton. Not only do we have Barry Farman come online, we have Park Morton coming online, too. And that one in particular has been a long time coming, so I know folks are excited.
Okay, anything else? Okay, again, I really just want to apologize to the public. I know we had some difficulties in the beginning, and we did not hear, some of you did not hear all of the executive directors. Again, I apologize. And we'll make sure that we do a better job as we move forward. So the next board meeting will be held on Wednesday, May the eighth, 2024, at 1:00 p.m. It's going to be done via WebEx. Information regarding viewing, participating in the meeting, live, providing test people can be found at dchousing.gov. If there's no other business, take a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay, with that, the meeting is adjourned. It is now 2:27 p.m. Thank you, thank you, for participating and joining us.